Thank you.
You're welcome. We will now start roll call. Kristi Angel, I am present. Constance Cecilia Do.
Here.
Celia Green.
Present.
Ayesha Husband. I see her there. Can you? Patricia Jewett.
Present.
Joanne Jones.
Present.
Kristy Montalvan.
Present.
Angel Morales. I know he said he might be traveling and need to be in the chat. I'm not sure. Um, I don't see him yet, so I'll go down. Craig Spencer.
Present.
And Amy Ming Sai.
Present.
Okay, we do have quorum and we can start the meeting. As co-president did state that we are just going over our purchase orders. This will need to be in. We'll work on that tomorrow. Once everything is approved and all purchase orders, the deadlines are for April 3rd. So I will go ahead and start so that we can hopefully be briefed today. Um, one moment. My apologies. Alright, I'll start this way. So we are having, as you know, our awards dinner that is coming up. And currently, this, I'll start with the, you know what, let me, let me back this out. I want to be more informative. So I'm gonna, my apologies. My Adobe is not showing me what I want, so I'm just gonna come in here. Here we go. So as you guys know, we are having our CCD 75 Outreach Committee Awards Dinner. And we'll be celebrating our D75 stakeholders similar to what we've done every year. This year, we are partnering with the district and we are able to do this a bit larger than we did it last year. So we will have 200 attendees this year. As stated, the district has graciously helped us out. They will be helping us with our tables. And helped to secure a location, which will be Baruch College. We were looking at June 2nd and June 9th. But June 9th does work better for Baruch College and our kids are out of school on that day as well. Which makes it a little bit more flexible. So the date that we are proposing for the awards dinner will be June 9th with the location at Baruch College of 152 East 26th Street, New York, New York. We are currently working on the agenda, so that's a work in progress. So I will kind of shoot over that, but I will let you know. We will have a DJ, we'll have karaoke and a lot of great fun things to do since we are going to be inviting about 50 students to attend with. To attend with us as well. So for our catering options, the main two that we ended up finding was not just Southern and BK2PR. These are two minority owned businesses with our vendors already with the NYC and with the DOE. And because we are having this offsite, we are able to spend a bit more money. Currently, we have it at $14.95 per person and I'll go into the money aspect of that shortly. Now, the items for. One moment. The items that we. Can we mute possibly? I um.
I'm cooking right now. No way, I'm gonna come in here at 6 o'clock and try to, and be in a meeting.
Craig, you're unmuted. Okay, uh, items for dinner. Um, the place table, I mean, excuse me, the dinnerware sets. It has been very challenging to find a full set together for 200 people. So I was not able, unless we're talking about color changes, I wasn't able to find anything else. Outside of the price that I'm going to show you on the secondary film for the items that are here. And they round out to about $117, which is a little bit similar to what we paid last year. Now, we have $500 for printing. This right here, this will be our banner that we will use for parades.
Why can't I get it?
Um, for parades and things of that nature, we will have the um. The holes at the top and the bottom. So if we want to have it strung up somewhere or carry it during the parade, then we can do so. This will be our collapsible or retractable banner. It stands about, oh, maybe eight feet tall. And we'll be able to use that. It's basically a template of welcome parents, students, family. Just so that we can use it at every event we have versus it being specialized for one event. Items that we're requesting, we are having, we are getting roundtables from the district and we will have a further follow-up logistical conversation. However, pricing out and figuring out 200 people, we will need about 25 tables. 25 tablecloths. As far as the pricing that we have left available, we can order 12 of those to keep for our council. Um, I would like flowers and vases, but I'll have to talk to the district to see what we can do because we cannot afford that currently. But we do have our rose petals and our different, you know, aesthetics from last year, so it still will be something pleasant. Um, so I did go over the retractable banner. We will have a sign-in tablecloth that we are working on to be made as well. So with that being said, I'll hop over to our. Excuse me, over to the estimates. Give me one moment. So as we have with our monies. We have $3,350 left in our parent involvement budget. With 200 attendees at $14.95 per person, we would be spending $2,990. That leaves $260 outside of that, which I will explain.
Anything that resonated from last week?
But we will do with that. I don't know if. Somebody's off of mute.
Uh, but some of the feedback that we got last.
Can't see the screen. Could somebody possibly mute for me? Thank you.
Mentioned, um, you were.
One moment, I'll mute it.
Thank you.
You were talking about other places and equipment.
So for the catering, as I said, $14.95, there are basically at this point too. I've reached out to a lot of minority owners and business partners and it's been not challenging, but it's been a slow flow with getting the information. So what I do want to say is BK2PR is what I'm aiming for. Not just Southern is amazing. They have the $14.95 price and as you can see here. Um, they would be offering four different types of salmon, a vegan lasagna and um, uh, let's see, there's something else. There's a roast compollo, chicken and rice with mac and cheese, mixed vegetables, and that would be it. For the BK2PR catering, we could have one poultry.
Jill, can you make the screen a little bigger because it's harder to see?
Okay, hold on.
I mean, it's just the size, just a little bit more, please. Thank you.
Oh, that's not letting me, let me see if I can blow it up bigger before I share. Give me one second.
You're a monster.
Hush, pop, pop. Oh, I got that a little too big. Is this better or? Let me know what you guys think. Is this a bit better?
Yeah, that's a lot better. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So the, and I'll show you guys if you want to see what, why I want to choose this option or why I'm pushing it forward. We get one poultry, one meat, one seafood, three side dishes, one vegetable, one salad. So that's a lot of um, really good food that we would be able to get. And I'll show you guys the menu shortly. I want to go through the numbers again. But as you can see, these are comparatively, we get much more for 200 people. And the, we have about four different types of menus to pick from with BK2PR. Um, in regard to our table settings for 200, as I did say on Amazon, I was able to find a, this should say 700 pieces, not 47, that's a typo. And it would be for 200 guests at $117 and it's only 100 per, um, for 100 people per set. So that's why we would need two for the $234. So up here, where I said we had $260 left over, we're using that for the table settings. So we'll have a little bit of money left over um, here in that regard. Um, for one of our series that we are having, the outreach and safety, we have been working on the sex ed series. And YAI Knowledge is working with us. Um, and so with them, what we found out is per 30, per 30 people, it'll be $250. So our aim is for 60 people. Um, our budget basically will only allow us to do 60. But seeing that we can have the video recorded and it can live on our website, we'll be able to still reach other um. Parents, students and things of that nature. So what we're doing is taking $400 fully from the speaker honorarium. And then we took $100 from parent involvement so that we can pay the full 500 for the 60 attendees. For printing, we do have, as I stated, the banners that I showed you, the standing banner. And so I went through three different places, You Printing, Vista Print and Amazon. And so far, You Print and Amazon are basic, they are um, the least expensive. Although I almost kind of would prefer to go with You Printing because um, they're fast. There's not a lot of cost attached, but as with Amazon, there's no um, delivery tax attached. Simply not tax, delivery cost attached because we're having this in June. So we can wait for it to arrive in April at whatever time without having additional cost. Um, so as you see the banners, the standing banners, these all have um, taxes included. So 172, 78, 132 and Amazon is 82.99. So Amazon is giving us some of the better pricing. For our tablecloth. Both places, Vista Print and You Printing are around the same price, $214 and $202. That means that our front would be similar to what we use with the district where we have, you know, District 75, et cetera, on the front. And then we could also have our logo on the sides of the table as well. With that, um, we would be using either or. If we use You Print or Vista Print, I just pulled this quick little number to the side. If we picked either of those, it would be $411. And then on the side here, the $73.98 goes with our tablecloths. And when I went on to Amazon, they had pretty much the better pricing for that. And for $73.98, we can get 12 tablecloths, they're washable, non-wrinkle, they're clothed, et cetera. So I think that's a very good price. And with either of those totals, You Print or Vista with Amazon, we would come up to $485. So that still keeps us under budget with the 500 that's available in printing. For the, um, we had $100 left in like needing refreshments and things of that nature. We're going to use that $100 on shop DOE and buy um, bottles of water for $90.93 so that we can use that amount of money. We have $100 left with supplies. We need, we're looking to give um, onboarding for the new council that comes. So we're trying to set up that legacy for them so that they're a little bit more aware of what we do versus the orientation that they'll get from face. So with that, we have 11 binders for 30.69. We have 11 dividers for 19.47. And then we also have their certificate covers for the certificates that we're going to print. We do have paper and things of that nature in the office, so we don't have to worry about that aspect. So this lets us clear up all of the monies that we have available currently. What I would like to do is go backwards for one second to show you the. One moment. The menu options, just so that we're transparent with what's going on here. One moment. Alrighty. Okay, so this is where we are. For the first person that came in with the not just Southern. This is where we have the $2,990 and as you guys can see, a roast compollo, blackened salmon, sweet chili salmon, vegan lasagna, two sides, et cetera. But for the other option, we have hot American. And as you can see, there's a bunch of potato options, cheesy potatoes, this potato, whatever you're kind of thinking about. There's a lot of meats. And mind you, we get the meat, we get the chicken, we get the seafood, we get three sides, two vegetables and things of that nature. So this is just for the hot American foods and then the sides. Then we have hot Italian foods, we have appetizers and we also have, which is really neat. I'll, I'll, I'll give this, I'll send this all to the council just so I'm not speeding through too fast. We have different seafoods, we have different meats. We also have. A Puerto Rican option. So I think that's great that we have so many different options of things that we can pick from. And in addition to these three um, menus, there's also a vegan option so that we can make sure that we um. Curate items that everyone can participate in and be able to, you know, have sensitivities to and, you know, be respectful of that. So with that being said, I can pull back up the, hold on a moment. I'll pull this back up and go back to the tab. So we are, one moment, guys. Yeah, these are the numbers. I want to come back to the numbers. Do we have any questions while I'm going through this right now?
Yeah, um, one question, Councilmember Angel. Do both of the, both of the vendors that you were showing for the food.
Yes.
They both have vegan options or it was just one or the other or?
They both have, um, they both have vegan options.
Okay, alright, I was just curious.
Only, the only, I don't know why this thing is up here. The only issue that I consider is that, you know, we're gonna have 200 people and if we can have more food. I think that would probably be, especially if it's the same price, I would say we should probably go with the one that gives us more options. Since we have more people there, but it's definitely for what the council wants to um, go on. I know when I looked, as I said, um, since it's off a DOE premises, the price point could go higher, but we really don't have much wiggle room to go any higher than the $14.95. If they force us to come down, then that's a different story. But right now, this is where those two price points are set and the vendors are already in the system. Um, and I would like, um, hopefully when we have our next meeting, maybe we can kind of narrow down what everyone might want to pick since it's so big. Or we'll give a couple of options and everyone can just say yes or no. But for not just Southern, this is the option we have here. We can go bigger and expand for BK2PR catering.
Alright, um, I have one other question.
Yes.
Since it is the end of the term, not just the end of the year. Is it possible that we can also do this as a, just as a D75, meaning a CCD 75 thing?
Oh, it is CCD 75. They're just helping us out because it's just end of the year. The same way we're gonna be helping the district out when they do the end of the year events. Because we don't have to now seeing that, you know, COVID's over and they're back to their part. So we'll be supporting them for the end of the year and then they're supporting us for our awards dinner. In the sense of giving us the tables and um, the location that they've been helping us with, et cetera, and with logistics.
No, no, that's not what I meant actually.
Okay.
Glad we're always collaborating with them, but I meant as a council thing as a whole, as opposed to just um, the outreach. Meaning.
It is. It's for the council as a whole. Outreach just does the awards dinner. We set it up, so it would be a CCD 75 awards dinner. I just have it as outreach because outreach is doing the legwork for it, per usual.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's ours. It's the councils for sure. It's not outreach's.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did anyone else have any other questions with the numbers or what we have set up here? Should I review anything again or show anything again for anyone?
Um, also, Councilmember Morales came in long ago, so it might be good to do like a little synopsis if you can.
Okay, I will go back again. Um, you're welcome. Mr. Morales, um, for parent involvement, we have $3,350 available. We are looking at two caterers who are minority women owned, um, and already vendors. And that's B2, uh, BK2PR catering and not just Southern. Both of these are price point at $14.95 per person. And I'm leaning toward the BK2PR because we will be able to get more food, poultry items, meat, seafood, three side dishes, vegetables and a salad. The remaining money, the $260 here, would go down to the table settings for the parent involvement. And as I said earlier, it's really difficult to find table settings in bulk with everything that you need for 200 people. So we're buying, I'm looking to buy two sets of the 700 pieces, which has the, uh, and I'll show you the pictures. It has uh, the plates, the dessert plates, the napkins, the cups, the um, dinnerware, et cetera. Um, with the $500 that we have, that we're asking, we have a sick, um. Outreach and Safety are working on a series, the sex ed series, and YAI Knowledge is working with us. So we are looking to spend $500 for that session. They are, it is $30, $250 per 30 attendees. We're looking to do 60 attendees and also have the recording live on our website so that people who cannot attend are able to um, chime in. We looked at this number based on um, the last. If it goes a little bit over, we'll have to, um, we have a little bit of wiggle room with YAI there. We're taking $400 from the speaker honorarium and an additional $100 from parent involvement to go ahead and circle that out for $500. For printing, we had $500 and we have a parade banner, standing banner. And our tablecloth, which will only be able to purchase 12 of them, which is not so bad. Um, and our sign-in tablecloth, these items, we have looked at You Printing, Vista Print and Amazon. And as you can see with You Printing and Vista Print, the number is pretty much the same. Amazon does give us wiggle room. Um. But even so, we would just be kind of leaving money on the table, so I'm hoping that we can work this out in a way where we um. Diligently use our funds. And what I was saying, Mr. Morales, is here is if we go with the 411 from Vista Print or You Printing. Plus the money for the tablecloths, which are washable, um, wrinkle proof, uh, cloth, et cetera. We would be at about $485. These items do have tax included. And I do have the invoices that I can provide to Jose to hopefully get those items um, pushed through PLO faster. We had $100 left for travel, local travel and refreshments. We're using 90 of those dollars, 90.93 through shop DOE to buy additional waters. Additionally, with shop DOE to set up the new members that'll be coming in next year with their onboarding binders. We are looking to buy 11 binders, 11 dividers. And we also have neat certificate covers for the awards for the dinner. Those items will tally to $95.16 for shop DOE. And to hustle a little bit backwards, since I know you missed it, um. Let's see, one moment. I think it may actually be on the same, um. Here we go. So as we said earlier, um. It is a CCD 75 awards dinner. The outreach committee is simply putting it together. There are, this is to celebrate our stakeholders, our teachers, our students, our parent coordinators, our, our principals, et cetera, per usual. We do get to be a bit bigger because um, the space allows for it. The district is working with us. They have solidified Baruch College. It is more flexible for us to work on June 9th versus June 2nd. Our students will be out of school on June 2nd. This will be from 6 to 8 PM. And the address is 152 East 26th Street. We will have a DJ, which I'm very happy about. We'll get to do some karaoke and some great fun things. Um, since we'll have our students and our parents and a really good kickback and celebration. As we said before, we did go over the caterers, $14.95 per person and that is the $2,990. And the reason that we're able to at least go to $14.95 per person is because it is off of DOE um, grounds. Otherwise, it would need to be a little bit um, lower per person. These are the items when I was speaking about buying the sets for 200 people. This is the set that I am trying to purchase. It's similar to the one that we purchased last year, just a different color. Here are our banners. This one would be for our parade. It does not show the, um, on the corners, the little holes that would put the rods or the strings if we up. Um, if we post it somewhere or if we have it in a parade so that we can physically carry it. We do have a retractable, um, banner. This would stand about eight feet tall. And we kept it very simple, um, simply so that we can use it everywhere that we go. The QR code does go back to our website so that makes sure that we keep people involved and they can always, you know, know how to get us regardless of where we are. The items that the, um, we will be needing are roundtables, tablecloths. The flowers in the vase, as I said before, we do have rose petals. We can put them in the vases and kind of make it, you know, beautiful. Or keep it the same way that we had it last year. We still have all of the um. Things that we use, the runners and the, the um, everything we bought last year, we still have accessible for this year. I'll, I'll make that easier to say. Um, so with that being said, we can discuss the volunteers and things of that nature another day. But with the numbers, um, I still want to put this back on the screen so when we do vote, everyone can still see what we're doing. This is what I would like to propose um, for the council to vote on um, as written. So that we can possibly go ahead and get the purchase orders done for the third and then be set um, for June. Does anyone else have any um, questions? Yes, Miss Cecilia Do, I see your hand is raised.
I just wanted to know, um, the BK2PR, I think is the name of the catering?
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Yeah. What is the meat they're providing? I saw the poultry and I saw the four salmon dishes.
Let me pull it back up. So we have.
Or is the four salmon dishes the other vendor? I just.
The fourth salmon.
Because I can't see most of this.
Here, is this better? Should I blow it up?
If you could.
Is that better, guys?
You can go ahead and explain.
Oh, okay, good. So this is the one, um, you get uh, one chicken, one seafood, one vegetarian. So you only get three options and two vegetables.
Okay.
With them. So that's why I was saying, if we went with the BK2PR, we have, I'll go back through. You said you wanted to see the meats.
Yeah, I, I saw that it's a poultry because they're offering chicken and I saw the seafood. What is the meat they're offering? I thought I only.
Under American, Italian and Puerto Rican. So.
Okay, so it's under those other venues. That's what I wanted to understand. Alright, I couldn't see it.
Yeah, it's a lot of, it's a lot of them.
Okay. They're the ones that are the multiples. They offer different menus, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. Alright, now, you can proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so then with that being said, um, let me come off of this one. If there's no, if there are no more questions, I would like to move that we accept um, the. The recommendations as written so that we can move forward with the purchase orders.
Before you move, um.
Absolutely, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I got a question about the banner. Is that necessarily the um, the decided upon or it can it?
We voted on the banner for the Disability Pride Parade, but when they canceled.
I, I know we need a banner, so that wasn't, I don't want to mean it like that. I meant, I meant the style, per se.
Um, if you guys want, I'll. Back up for you guys. If you want to have a different style of banner, um, you would just have to let me know, um. Because I created it. So if it's something different or whatever edits, if someone sees something like, hey, can we add this or can we add that? Anything can be added, detracted, changed, or what do you, are you thinking of, um, hold on, pull this so you can see better. Is there something that you would like to change?
Um, I'm not seeing it on screen at all right now, but.
Oh, no. Hold on one second. Thank you for letting me know that. Here you go. Are you guys able to see that?
Yeah, I like, I do like um, this part of it. Um, the one, the part that says the citywide council for 75, the part with all the different kids. And stuff and the fact that some of the kids are at desks and some are wheelchairs and like. That is really good. I was talking about the other part, the longer part.
Okay, alright.
Right, um, and I agree with all the wording and stuff, um. And if it is possible, and I understand that everyone loves curriculums these days, if it is also possible to put um. The email address as well.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes, we definitely.
Okay, um, that's the only thing I was gonna say. If anybody wants to. Was any other things they want to say?
Yeah, I got, absolutely. Not a problem. I, I see two more people had their hands raised, but I can't tell who.
Um, Mr. Spencer and then Constance. Go ahead, Mr. Spencer. Mr. Spencer? Councilmember Spencer? Alright, well, maybe he did that by accident then. Uh, or maybe he's on mute or something.
There was one other person too, as well.
Constance, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, the banner we're seeing is the retractable one or is it?
The upright, the upright one would be the retractable one, yes.
Okay, so these are two different banners we're seeing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. The um, the one with the children and the wheelchairs and all that is the retractable or not the retract?
This would be the one for the parade. And when I was saying, they have those, I can't remember the name of it, the little things, the circles that are in the sides where you can either string it up. Or put them in if we're walking or if we want to use it in other capacities. This doesn't show those um, holes.
Okay, that's fine. The second one is the retractable, correct? And that would be hanging.
The retractable would be standing.
It would be standing, okay.
It has a stand, so it would be standing, maybe registration or wherever we would place it um, for people to come in.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of like, you remember when we did our um, back to school events and at their registration, it was really tall standing there for welcoming the parents? This would be similar to that.
Okay, so this is the standing one, the retractable is.
The standing. The standing one is retractable.
Yeah, okay. The standing one is retractable, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to ascertain. Okay, it is also a retractable banner. All right.
On Amazon, it comes with the stand and with the bag.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Angel, you have three things in the chat. I think Mister Spencer just said he came off mute. And Miss Husbands and somebody else put stuff in the chat.
Uh, Patricia, good evening, everyone. Christie, thank you so much for taking the time to make this wonderful presentation. Just wondering, can you please be so kind to email this? Absolutely. Yes, 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 yes. I was gonna put it on the website, but I just, I, it's been a long day. Absolutely, I will email this to everyone as soon as, as soon as I'm done with, with, uh, with the presentation. Mister Spencer, not sure why, okay. Can we put a curly or coarse haired child on the banner? Yes. Yes, I will make a note of that. Mister Spencer, are you able to speak now? Or can you put in the chat what it might be? He says he's off of mute, but I, I can't hear him. He says, hold on, okay. Does anyone else have any questions while we're waiting for Mister Spencer?
I don't see any other hands at this point, so it's probably just Mister Spencer.
I'm calling him to see if I can get his audio on this side.
I have my hand up. Co-president Green, Councilmember Angel.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember C D.
I just wanted to ask, with the three that you presented, it's Vista Print, Amazon, and the other one, Amazon is the cheapest out of the three for the same items?
Um, yes, let me go back to that.
I just want to understand, because Amazon you're saying is cheaper than the other two. Considerable amount, but
And my only, my only, um, where are we, down here, my only hesitation is, I don't know the and it may not, it may not even matter whether I, you know, go up to finance, but I don't know the quality of what they will give us. So that's why I have a little bit of hesitation, but when I looked at some of the things, it looked completely okay. But I cannot vouch for quality. But the pricing kind of leans into what we've gotten in every other place, you know, just, you know, slightly off.
Um, so the other two companies, you can vouch for their quality? That's, I just want to understand, because you're saying
Vista Print and you printing are, I mean, Amazon is a well-known brand, but Vista Print and you printing are well-known for printing. Amazon kind of is an aggregate of everything, so you kind of go fishing and kind of get what you get.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to understand, okay.
Mister Spencer, put his in the chat.
Um, yes, we can add the email to the standing banner as well, Mrs. Spencer. Did I miss anything else? I'm trying to Was that the only question in the chat? If not, if, I mean, if we are, if we finish the, the Q and A, or if no one has further questions, can we move to the motion part of it, or is everyone comfortable? Does anyone have further questions or considerations? If not, I would like to move that we have our awards dinner for June ninth at Baruch College from six to eight P M, and to receive the recommendations for the purchase orders as presented. Oh, wait, Mister Spencer, is your hand still up, or, or? I don't want to forget you. Go ahead, Miss Sissiadu.
In the motion, are we all, um, you're not presenting a vote for which caterer? And also the vendor for those other items, as you said, Amazon, Vista Print, and the other company. You just want to vote.
I know that they'll, whatever we have on this page, that the finance is going to pick whatever's, you know, unless we give them a reason for why we want to pick a specific caterer, et cetera, they are going to try to push us toward the lower cost of things.
Right, but you said the caterers are exactly the same. They're offering the same, correct? So it's up to the
But it's the money. I mean, not, not the money, it's the food. You get more food.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying, if you're saying the caterer is charging fourteen ninety-five per person, regardless of the vendors, the two of them are both So that would be something we as a group will decide which one we want.
So we should break this down in motions.
Right, maybe you should make multiples.
So the first motion is, I would like to submit to move for the council to vote for June ninth as the date for the awards dinner at Baruch College from six to eight P M.
Um, you need a second. Can someone second it?
I'll second the motion.
Co-president Sai, did you? All right, so it was motioned by Councilmember Angel and seconded by Councilmember Sai. Is there any discussion, debate on on any of it?
Co-president Green?
Yeah.
Just, I need to ask a question, Miss Angel. You said six to eight. We're only doing it for two hours, correct?
It's six to eight, we're allowed to go into, um, I, I believe Sasha had said that they're letting people drop things off at four P M. So we could start it earlier if the council would like to have it longer.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. It's not six to nine. That means we vacate. That's what I wanted to understand. It has to stop at eight, but you're saying there's a window for things to begin earlier?
There is a window for it to begin earlier. Sasha put in the, um, request from four to eight o'clock. So we we start at five thirty-five?
So we're voting on the actual watch time. Okay, thank you.
Did anyone else have any discussion about the, the time for the event, if we should maybe put that, adjust that in the motion?
Um, Mister Spencer, put something in the chat again.
Can we, oh, wait a minute, hold on.
Due to my work schedule, but I'm in favor, majority of what the council decides. Okay.
So then I would move that we have our dinner on June ninth at Baruch College from six to eight P M with the caveat that we might be able to start maybe thirty minutes earlier if possible for five thirty to eight?
Okay, and Miss, Miss, co-president Sai, are you, are you still seconding the motion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm moving that we have our event on June ninth from six to eight P M at Baruch College with the caveat of possibly starting at five thirty P M. If we're able to.
Uh, that's fine, our motion, our second motion, the amendment.
So are we, I've never done the roll call and part, so do we just go right into the roll call now?
Do we have any discussion from any members of the council? I don't see any hands up. I don't see anybody on meeting staff, so I'm going to say we can go into roll call.
Okay, so Christie Angel, I am a yes. Um, Constance Sissiadu?
Yes.
Celia Green?
Yes.
Ayesha Husbands?
Yes.
Patricia Jewitt?
Yes.
Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Kristy Montalvan?
Yes.
Angel Morales? Craig Spencer?
He also put yes in the chat.
Amy Ming Sai?
Yes.
That's eleven, um, yeses, the motion has passed.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's ten yeses.
Excuse me, thank you for that. Um, okay. Just want to make sure I'm saving the stuff for Christie. So the next motion for the caterer, I move that we use B two, B K two P R catering for fourteen ninety-five per person for the awards dinner.
It's been moved by Miss A, by Councilmember Angel, who's seconding. All right, Mister Spencer, it has seconded the motion. Is there any, Mister Spencer already did, but it's acknowledged, Miss Husbands. Is there any debate, discussion, or can we continue with the motion? With the vote, sorry. Hands up. Let me make sure I don't see anything in the chat. Okay. Then no hands up, nothing in the chat. You can continue with the roll call on the vote, Miss Angel.
Christie Angel, yes. Constance Sissiadu?
Yes.
Celia Green?
Yes.
Ayesha Husbands?
Yes.
Patricia Jewitt?
Yes.
Joanne Jones?
Yes, Angel is yes in the chat.
Thank you. Kristy Montalvan?
Yes.
Craig Spencer? Okay, and Amy Ming Sai?
Yes.
That's ten yeses, the motion carries. So for the next I want to try to merge these. For the remaining items, for the table settings, for two hundred and thirty-four dollars, printing, meeting supplies, these items here, the, the two hundred and thirty-four dollars printing, meeting and supplies, these things are already on our budget lines, so I would like to merge them as one motion. Would everybody be okay with that, or do you still want me to do these separately? I don't mind, but seeing that we have line items for these, I kind of wanted to Okay, well. For the last two items at the bottom are, uh, travel cost for meetings, for shop D O E, for the both, for, for the two shop D O E items. Yes, Miss Sissiadu?
Mister Spencer put in the chat, he would like the printing done separately.
He would like, okay, so that's, thank you so much for that. We can do printing separately. One moment. Making a new form for the printing.
Councilmember Angel?
Yes.
Um, because you have it in different bundles on the screen already, like
Okay.
And the parent involvement could be, be one, the, the one with whatever is tied to each other, just let those be one in itself, and we move on from there, because we already started with with the caterer one, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, so let's go for the, for the vendor for Amazon, for the two hundred, um, items for two hundred and thirty-four dollars, and for the shop D O E for one hun, for ninety dollars for the waters, and I'm trying to figure out how I want to work this. For the shop D O E items, I would like to recommend as presented for the for the vote. So I would like to move that we receive the shop D O E items as presented, which is ninety dollars and ninety-three cents for the waters and ninety-five dollars and sixteen cents for all of the supplies that will be needed.
All right, you've motioned it. Is there a second? Mister Spencer seconded in the chat? Is there any debate and discussion? All right, I'm not hearing any.
Miss Sissiadu has her hand raised.
Okay, go ahead, Miss Sissiadu.
I have to raise my hand to understand it. We're not moving any money from anywhere to this category in order to make sure these items are paid for. That is money that's already there, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that money's in their line item, yes.
Right now, okay, because I can't see most of this. All right, thank you.
Let me make it bigger for you. Is this a bit better?
Yes, that is better, thank.
So these are the two items from shop D O E, ninety ninety-three from the travel reimbursement line, refreshment line, and ninety-five sixteen for supplies.
That's what I was asking. These, the monies are already in separate line items, so Okay, that's what I was asking. We are moving something to another line item in order
No, 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 these items are already set. We can't move anything from our budget. And here is already on its line item.
Okay, so you are using the ninety out of the, um, the meeting one hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
And the other one is coming out of supply. Okay, thank you. That's the clarification I needed. Thank you.
Welcome. Um, I see there's some more in the chat. I'm not sure if it's new or old. Um, he seconded. Okay, so are we co-president Green, or where should we move forward now?
Yeah, we can continue with the motion if there's no further debate.
Mister Spencer seconded, so will I be able to move forward?
Roll call.
Uh, Christie Angel, yes. Constance Sissiadu?
Yes.
Celia Green?
Yes.
Ayesha Husbands? Ayesha Husbands?
Yes.
Patricia Jewitt?
Yes.
Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Kristy Montalvan?
Yes.
Mister Morales?
He put yes in the chat.
Craig Spencer?
Yes, in the chat as well.
And Amy Ming Sai?
Yes.
Ten yeses, the motion has carried. All right, so the next item, one moment, please. So we've done the catering, the, all right, we need to go to one, two, so we just have the printing sex ed and the vendor. Okay, so the printing, Mister Spencer didn't want to do separately, so. We do have these kind of separate guys, so this is what we have to figure out. With Amazon, there is no tablecloth that we can get, but we could go ahead and vote for the line items, uh, the parade banner, the standing banner, the, the tablecloths, we can get that from Amazon, and then we vote to take one of these other items for the sign-in tablecloth, whether it's you printing or Vista Print, so we may have to put a separate motion for that. So let's start with that. For the sign-in tablecloth, do we have, does anyone have any, I mean, seeing that they're similar in price, do we want to just vote, go with the Vista Print since it's two hundred and two dollars, and that's a little bit less than the two fourteen ninety-one? Does anyone have any thoughts there? If not, I'll motion that we have our sign-in tablecloth through the sign-in tablecloth through Vista Print, and the remaining banners and tablecloths that we need for our tables through Amazon. So I'll go ahead and motion that. I move that we receive our banners and tablecloth through Amazon, and our sign-in tablecloth through Vista Print.
Mister Spencer seconded it in the chat.
Okay, hold on one moment. Let me make notes on this one. Amazon. And Vista. Um, Christie Angel, uh, we'll start the voting now. Christie Angel, yes?
Um, one second, you have to ask if there's any discussion or debate. Is there any further discussion or debate? Let me check the chat. I don't see any hands up. Go ahead with the roll call vote.
Christie Angel, yes. Constance Sissiadu?
Yes.
Celia Green?
Yes.
Ayesha Husbands?
Yes.
Patricia Jewitt?
Yes.
Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Craig Spencer? And is he yes in the chat?
Yes, in the chat.
And Amy Ming Sai?
Yes.
Ten yeses, the motion carries. I'm gonna save that. Okay, and our last item would be the, actually, there's two. We have the sex ed series. We can go ahead and vote on that. Um, I move that we um, use the five hundred dollars from the Speaker Honoraryum and Parent Involvement to have Y A I knowledge come present to our, come present a workshop to the council. So I'll say that again. I move that we use the four hundred dollars from Speaker Honoraryum and one hundred from Parent Involvement to use the five hundred dollars for Y A I knowledge to present a workshop to the council and parents.
Can we get a sec- Mr. Spencer seconded it in the chat. Is there any further discussion or debate? I gotta ask one question though, Miss um, Miss uh councilmember Angel.
Yes, ma'am.
Why I, sorry, Y I, do they realize it's a council um, that, when they're making the presentation, or?
Yes, yes, they do. I mean, in the sense that it's, I'm saying the council, but it's for our council, for our members of the schools, and for the parents. It's not just for us, it's for the parents.
No, no, I get that, but I'm just saying, um, you know, if people know you don't have a budget per se, sometimes they will do it, but I'll.
Oh, this is, this is actually the cheapest we've been able to get it. Um, uh, councilmember um, Aisha Husbands and I, uh, she's, she started working on this in September. I jumped in at the end of last year, so this has been a work in process since last year. We had someone that wanted to do it for like a thousand dollars, and it's been a lot of, either they don't do it, you don't have it available, or it's a really high price point, and we can't record. It's a lot of caveats um, to it. So this is the best that we've come up with so far.
No problem, just asked you.
Okay.
Alright, if there's no further debate, I'm sure it's nothing in the chat. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I don't see any hands, nothing in the chat. You can go ahead with the roll call.
Uh, Christie Angel? Yes, or Constance Ceciadu?
Yes.
Celia Green?
Yes.
Aisha Husbands?
Yes.
Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
Joanne Jones?
Yes, Angel is yes.
Recording in progress.
Kristy Montalvan?
And Mr. Spencer put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you. And Amy Ming Psy?
Yes.
That's ten yeses, the motion carries. Gotta save that, and then our last vote would be for the vendor, and I apologize, I wasn't able to find another one, so this may be something we may have to kind of crash and burn and work on, we'll see, but for the numbers that still work, I move that we use Amazon for our table setting for two hundred for the two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Is there a second? Mr. Spencer seconded in the chat. Is there any just debate or discussion? I see no hands. And I see no questions in the chat. Please proceed with the roll call vote.
Christie Angel, yes. Constance Ceciadu?
Yes.
Celia Green?
Yes.
Aisha Husbands? Aisha Husbands?
Yes.
Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
Joanne Jones?
Yes, Angel, yes.
Thank you. Kristy Montalvan?
Yes.
Amy Ming Psy? Oh, excuse me, Craig Spencer?
Yes, in the chat already. We put yes.
And Amy Ming Psy?
Yes.
That's ten yeses, the motion carries, and that should finalize our motions for today. I believe we all see. Yes, that is everything. So this finalizes for me um, what I needed to present to the council, and I have nothing further to present at this time. I will take the changes that were given and um, update everything before we send it out to uh be printed, et cetera.
Uh, Mr. Spencer put one additional thing in the chat, I believe?
Yes, please.
Yeah, he has one additional question, so he didn't type out the question yet, I guess. Uh, Mr. Spencer, uh, can you type it out?
Sorry, go ahead. Ah, sorry.
Yeah, he said he tried his audio again, but.
We can wait to read what you have to. Can we add to the four nineteen agenda, um, the updates from this, you're stating? Yes? If that's the question? Yes, yes, then yes. I don't mind, I don't mind yet, regurgitating, letting you guys know where this is for the nineteenth.
Okay.
And so that concludes my portion, and I I believe if we have nothing further, that will conclude the meeting as well, but I'll pass it back over to the um, the chairs. Mrs. Ceciadu has her hand up as well.
Go ahead, councilmember CD.
Um, I just wanna uh understand. Councilmember Angel, you said you will be sending all this out to us?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna put it together and send it to you now.
Also, um, Mr. Spencer requested, we um, add this to the agenda for the next meeting. Co- we also, um, are you planning to have a meeting of your commit, um, I'm sorry, let me just put it, uh, we are giving the awards out. Is there, can we add a discussion on?
Absolutely, yes.
Awarded, and how we're going to go about this, because some council members will not be coming back, and it may be that they have particular people in mind they feel need.
I would, I would love that, seeing that we have more people that are gonna be coming. I will definitely set up another meeting, if I can try to get it in before our meeting, um, so that we can discuss that, and you know how we want to award people the amount that we want to do and that kind of thing, absolutely.
Yeah, if you could, if it could be an agenda item, so we can discuss, so we have a format, just in case you can't formulate a meeting prior to.
Yes, I'm gonna write the agenda to the item.
Two things that Mr. Spencer put in the uh, in the chat are add menu options, um, meaning adding the menu options also to the agenda, I'm assuming.
I'm gonna, unless he's asking me to send that to him, I'm, yeah, what is?
Less possible.
Layout, yeah, I can do the final banner. Yep, I can do that.
And finalizing menu options, yes, that's what he's meant.
Okay, perfect. Yes, yes, yes. That's fine. And I'll post those out to everyone, um, everything that we discussed now with all of the menus, I'll attach that incentive to everyone out now. You're welcome, uh, Mr. Spencer. So it's, I see Mrs. Ceciadu has her hand raised again.
Uh, councilmember.
That's from prior, sorry.
Well, then I'll hand it back over to you, um, um, Celia Green, Miss Ceciadu.
Okay, alright, is there any further comments, discussion, or anything on any, on specifically this topic? Alright, uh, this is Spencer put in the chat, what? Oh, God, all things close. In the chat. Okay, he put in the tech, we had a technical issue, but I think we figured that out. Alright. So hearing none, I don't think I see any hands raised. And hearing none. I am gonna say that we can conclude this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn in a second. So who's gonna give me a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Okay. And it was seconded by Ms. Jewett. It was motioned by Miss Angel, was it? It was seconded by Ms. Jewett.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Uh, is there anyone opposed or abstaining from this motion? Alright, nothing in the chat. No hands, we're all good. Alright. Have a great evening, and we will look forward to seeing everyone in April.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone. Thank you.